It's six o'clock, so we'll make a start if you're all ready. It is Tuesday, the 20th of June. We're here for Finance and Personnel Committee, thank you very much. Item 79, does anyone have any declarations of any disposable pecuniary interest fees? None? Apologies for absence, I think we're all here Karen? All apps. Thank you very much. 8123, to confirm the minutes of the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting held on the 23rd of May. They went to full council at the end of May, are you all happy that they were true record? Yeah, thank you very much. There was a couple of action points which I'll just pick up very quickly. The first one was that the staff welfare review referred to in the minutes circulated to committee members and that was done, thanks very much for that Karen. That was the only official action point, but there was one. Oh, yes. Where was that one? The list of assets and land and stuff, that was also related as well. And just on the staff structure one, Alan, there's a query about the heritage lottery funded roles and when the funding for those roles would come to an end, can we get to a bottom of that?
Too many signatures.
Is that enough? Cool, yeah, so we make a note of that one. Everyone happy with the minutes? Next one, 8223, approval of payments. If you've read your emails and the numerous attachments, you've been sent all of the payments that have been made. Are there any, Alan, that you particularly want to highlight to the committee, is it all sort of fairly one out of a mill stuff?
First of all, I'd sort of apologise, the one I sent you didn't hit, it hit the wrong transaction numbers in, I've corrected it on this copy and it's corrected on the website, it will go out. Essentially what happens is all payments up to £15,000 are approved by the SMT, excluding me, I'm excluded for that particular basis, between £15,000 and £25,000 is a councillor and at the time Clark only, and above £25,000 is two councillors. So at this particular period, we only had two payments that could do with the fish pass and they were approximately fifty, one was £13,000 and one was fifteen, sorry, one was £16,000 and one was about £17,000. And those payments were authorised by councillor Harvey and the town clerk.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on the various payment documents that were circulated? Nope. Are you happy to approve those payments? Yeah, can I have a proposal in a second for the minutes? Yeah. Matt and Chris. Cool. 8323, financial report for the two months ended 31st of May. Again, that was circulated and there's lots of narrative included within that one. Anything you wanted to add? We're only two months in, it's not too exciting just yet, but.
I just want to, we really badly want to get the information up because what happens is after the year end, we have to upload the new budgets, move all the data across. And so we really want to get information up, we were wanting two adjustments which I've expanded in the narrative, which we've now made. And the first one really relates against the previous mayor. So what happens is the mayoral year runs from May to May, our financial year runs from April to March, so we only finalised that quite recently. So these figures don't reflect that, but the report that's now will be circulated tomorrow and considered by the Heritage and Town Events or Events team, that is now up to date. And the second thing, there was the extension to the particular table, should have gone and be funded from the reserve and I've actually accidentally included it in the expenditure. But I haven't adjusted that because one of the things that I try to do is, what I have to say in the meeting is represented by the accounting records, otherwise we end up in a bit of trouble. There's a query, one or two months later, I'll have no idea where I got the biggest one, but I've got a download of the accounting records at this particular point in time. I think the point is, you know, we're okay, it is too early to actually see, there's a bit of seasonal factors and also, you know, at the end of next month, we'll probably be a little bit more realistic. We tried to revise estimation of where the budget is based on the August figures and then we do another one in November because that's when we also appear to need a budget. So basically we have this. I will certainly, if something drastic came up, the first port of call I'll do is to the Chair of this committee and, you know, and I'm sure we would decide whether to, you know, whether it was serious enough to have an emergency meeting or to inform members. But there's nothing that really comes out of this at the moment.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Terry?
Yeah, I was talking this morning with Tina and David Brooks and they were telling me that we need £100,000 for the scaffolding for the towers and we've seen a, let's say, suspiciously round figure. Do we have any more information on that and where we might get it and how we might get it because I think it should be discussed in council?
I think at the moment, we estimated and mounted the project's budget, which we put in, we had no idea of what it was going to cost. Certainly at the end of this meeting, I can, you know, just reaffirm my way through the project's budget in terms of that. I had the feeling that the costings are actually sitting on one of our emails that I don't have access to, which took in as a more realistic figure. We did budget, I think about £60,000 to £80,000 rings about that we did for phase one and we would have allocated to fund that. We have a property repairs reserve and I think the money would, it would have been earmarked to come from that particular reserve. A figure of £100,000 makes me sweat as well because it's quite a big number to find, but I'm sure we budgeted about £60,000 to £80,000.
Thanks very much. Presumably that's our own money rather than grant funding?
We haven't budgeted any grant funding for that. Project's budget.
Okay. And just looking at the sort of variances, I think it might be useful just for the committee to be aware of. Take a good example, equipment support and maintenance. So in the first two months of the financial year, we've needed, well, we've spent over half the total yearly budget for equipment and maintenance. And that might mean that we have no more expenditure planned for a while, so it's not a problem. Or it might mean we get to the end of the financial year and it's a problem and we massively overspend. To what extent can those budgeted figures vary before councillors basically authorise going over the budget that's been allocated? What's the sort of process in terms?
Our financial regulation, well, at the moment, our equipment support and maintenance has been, just to give a little bit of history, for the last two years, we've actually had some challenges. One of the things that we've done, some of our contracts run, our annual contracts, we paid for them at about this time of year in May per year, we've actually repaid a three-year contract. So because we were faced with quite high annual costs, we didn't do that. But what we would do is, we would do a forecast and if we believed that the budget would be exceeded, we'd have to find the money from another item. The financial regulations at the moment say below £10,000, that goes to the town clerk, we port it through to the Finance Committee, above £10,000, the decision has to be made by the Finance Committee.
Okay. And just picking on Terry's point there about the scaffolding, there's a couple of references to the heritage lottery funded work in the Guildhall, which is essential revenue to do various heritage-related events and whatnot. And there's also money related to the Heritage Master Plan. How much of that is all funded by heritage lottery funding and how much of that is funded by Fethford Town Council? I'm not clear, they're two very big projects, but I don't feel like I've got much awareness of what our liability is to deliver those.
Our contribution in terms of the master plan, we have actually spent, so that was expensed in last year. What we did is because we had certainty over the amount, it wasn't subject to any approval, it was a matter of submitting the invoices, a simple work plan, we submitted that, I accrued for that at year end and then had to reverse accrue. I'm waiting for that money to come through from Heritage Lottery Fund and I'm expecting that money, hopefully it will come through within weeks, not months. In terms of the Guildhall project, I wasn't able to do that because first of all, Heritage Lottery Fund had wiped our data accidentally, so our claim form is lost. We need to sit down and get a nut to date form of them, so I've actually expensed that, but we will receive, we have submitted, all we're on the verge of submitting a grant, which in an ideal world would have gone into last year, it's actually going to come into this year. So I haven't been able to accrue any income of that because it would have been prudent to do that. You know, I had so much uncertainty, so until I have the confirmation, normally we get confirmation of the claim and then we could expect a revenue, at this moment we haven't. So I've treated it, we've got a grant coming from two, the same organisation, one we have certainty on and the other one we don't have certainty on. So as being a typical accountant, which is, I don't, and that is an embarrassment at times, we've just gone and just done what's prudent.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will receive money for the Guildhall this year, which will then offset that expenditure and as soon as the master heritage fund comes through, that will clean up that cost, there'll be no costs for this year.
Yeah, Terry?
Another one, I hope this is appropriate. Interest rates are rising, good news if you're saving, bad news if you're borrowing. How are they likely to affect the town council budget?
We don't have any borrowings, so we don't have any overdraft facilities, so we have no interest rate exposure. Where it has an impact is where the people, the impact is on the equity market. So if interest rates rise, we have a small component of government guilds, so those are actually going to lose a little bit of value, but hopefully, you know, our basket of goods in terms of our share portfolio, hopefully we'll balance that out. But it could impact on the growth of our investments, that's what I'd say is there a negative impact.
Okay. So once we've got some more clarity on those two lots of funding, are you happy to bring a report back and just sort of outline where we're at in terms of town council liability and grant funding? I'm just conscious it's a significant part of our budget, it's a lot of work.
I mean, the heritage master plan figure will disappear from the budget completely, from these reports completely because it's just, I have to reverse an accrue, I could leave it there and we just don't have, I don't have depth in my finance department to do things like that. The Guildhall, you will actually see it because what will remain will be what we have to deal with this year and then we might have to do a environment to deal with that. But I certainly will update it every month.
Okay, that seems quite fluid, so, you know, in a couple of months when we have a bit more certainty, I think that'll be useful. Okay, Mike?
Thank you. I just wanted to check this out on one of the comments you made, the last comment refers to an overspending in heritage and events and the phrase you used, due to a cost of £4,020 that requires reallocation, I wonder whether you can talk us through what will happen or is that?
That's gone into reserves. It's actually a project-funded expenditure and we'd accidentally put it into heritage and town events, but your report tomorrow that you receive, it's all of that report, my apologies, but it was, as the accounting records were at that particular point in time, and this report has started. And I personally removed it from that report, I know.
Okay, so in terms of frequency, are you intending to produce a financial report each month or every two months?
I would prefer to do it on a month-by-month basis. We have to do it for the various committees and this is just an overall basis and it helps us, we have to, you know, otherwise if people come to ask me where is our spending against our budget, I won't be able to answer it in these reports. We actually try and put these reports through the SMT at the same time, so that's kind of internal things that we're trying to do.
Okay, so I'm happy with monthly. Any further questions from anyone? Okay, so our task with this one is to note the financial report, are you all happy to note? Suits would be noted. 8423, the internal audit report. Again, that was circulated in advance, quite a comprehensive document. Anything you want to add, Alan, to the?
The one thing that I couldn't do in the report that I circulated is I couldn't actually, I didn't have a chance to meet the town clerk to get our formal comments. I've added those in, those are in blue highlights, it will be in the page if you have it. It was a very simple thing, it's really around the website and it's updating the policy. They have raised this before. So we go to put it in a place, so as soon as a policy goes through full council, we will then update it onto the website. That, you know, I'm an administrator, the policies have been picked up, actually, I'm the kind of author of it, so I do apologise that's happened. And the second issue is that our website is really outdated and it's on the verge of being upgraded. And that, as soon as that's done, we can have proper archiving, there's so much data on it, it's all over the show. There's certain things that we have to do from a financial perspective, we have to have all seven years of audit reports and seven years of financial data and at the moment, it is on the website, but if you had to, you know, you could actually have a TV competition to go find them because it's that complex and challenging to do so. So when the new website comes in, we will actually be able to address that issue.
Is that being built in-house or you hide it off to get a website?
There is an external developer.
Those of us that were here last year when we received the audit for, read texts that said our website's not very good then. Why has it taken us more than a year to progress that?
I can't answer that.
In that case, you can answer that one. When will it be done by? Is it going to be saying like a month, two months, three?
My understanding is it's fairly imminent.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, sure. Yes, I'm on venues and comms, so the website sort of falls under my realm. I'm forming a working party to have a look at the new website. Unfortunately, the new one replicates a lot of the problems of the old one, so it's going to take a bit of work to get that sorted and we're in the process of doing it in consultation, obviously, with the council.
Yep. I think it's, you know, having been identified twice now in an audit, it's quite important that the website is addressed quite quick and also because it is genuinely rubbish.
It's, you know. But then, but then every council website I go on, I'm all rubbish. I've yet to find a really good one. Tell me.
There's one, it's Hamball Town Council, very good. They're down near Warsatch in Hampshire.
That must have taken some looking for, that's quite a difference. You were going to say something like Albra's really good.
Osweastria are doing theirs, that's a good one.
Right, okay.
See, I've been around the country.
Yeah.
It's often decent.
Um, Osweastria's all right. But you're not terribly well.
Okay, so I've just been.
Nah, you know, it's all relative. There are some worse than ours and some far better than ours, but if it's been highlighted in the audit that it's particularly poor, I think we need to act on it.
And it absolutely needs upgrading, changing, whatever. Yeah, it's a good point, but what I was trying to say is, I've seen this with so many councils who put a website in and then add a bit, add a bit, add a bit and it becomes nothing like it was supposed to be.
I have built websites before and I've worked on websites before. I would like to hope we'll get something that is.
I'm sure it'll be better than what we've got.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Alan, to introduce your flow there? Any other questions, folks, on the audit? No, I am just going to pick out one particular point, which is on page five, there's a section there that comments on Charles Borough Centre, and I've been having some conversations with Alan about that. We had a conversation of planning about Charles Borough Centre and the complications with the lease in relation to the telecommunications mask. But in short, Norfolk County Council own the site, they lease it for town council, who then subleases it to Charles Borough Centre Limited. And the audit here is picked up, as it often, well, I think it's in there every year for the past however many years, about the town council has no control but could be financially liable for breaches within the lease and any rent increases imposed by the owner. And I always get a bit nervous when a potential liability is outlined but not quantified. And my conversation with Alan was, you know, I would be happy for us as a council to pay somebody, probably a lawyer, to review the lease that's in place to better quantify our liabilities, basically. I shouldn't imagine that's too complicated piece of work. But rather than having something appear in a document every year in an audit, we need to demonstrate that we've attempted to mitigate or manage that risk and I think having an assessment done of the lease is probably the best way to do that. Is that something members would be happy with?
I think one of the reasons we kept raising it at finance before because we didn't know what it looked like.
Yeah. Yeah. Having been involved in the beginning, we got specific advice on the legal structure and what was best in terms of what was best for Fethford. I'm not sure we ever got advice in terms of quantifying potential liability and I think from an audit point of view, that's what we need to do. So rather than just having that keep appearing every year, we should attempt to probe it a bit more. You happy with that?
Yep.
Could you have a peek at the lease, could you send it to us?
Yeah. Secret document?
No, no, but it's, I don't have it, I've got hard copies of it, aside, hard copies, I'll check if we've got a electronic version, otherwise I could maybe find another way to do it. They're quite complicated documents.
There they are.
But I will definitely do that.
So if we could note that Karen as an action point in the minutes, that'd be useful. So our decision required there is to recommend the report to full council. Can I have a proposal in a second to recommend the audit report to full council? Mike Windle and Chris Harvey, all agreed? Thank you very much. 8523, personnel report, to receive and discuss the attached personnel report, again, that's more hacks, which was very useful. Looking for each of that. Normally the town clerk leads on the personnel side, but she's not here. Did you have anything, Alan, you wanted to add to that report or was it really just a note?
It's really just a note.
It's good to see a number of councillors signing up to training, so I'm glad for doing that and I know there's some others booked on in the future, which is good. As part of this, no, a separate. So we'll note the personnel report and move on to the second part of that report, which is policy review. To review the following policies, co-option policy and the councillor vacancy policy, decision required to recommend the policies to full council. You would have been circulated the two individual policies, having read them, they are remarkably similar, which is why I took the opportunity to merge them together. So you hopefully saw the revised version that I sent through yesterday. Does anybody have any questions on either of those policies? No, all fairly?
I'm trying to find out what the difference was to see if I took myself up.
Well, I thought why have two policies when you can have one? Terry?
Just, just like I say, thanks for doing that. The policy was a bit opaque and it had fallen down in the past with some struggles. It does seem to me to be completely reasonable, but people are saying an abstention is not counted at all, so thanks very much for that work. Thank you.
Okay, everybody happy? So I'm happy to propose the revised policy that I circulated yesterday, it's a proposal to full council anyway. Is somebody happy to second that? Yeah, Mac, thank you, all agreed?
Yeah.
And you've got the, I copied you and then I said you've got the revised version.
Yes.
Good. 8723, councillor emails, just got some notes here. Several councillors have complained, certainly to myself, about the volume of emails that they are receiving, with many not always relevant or sent without little overview or context. New councillors in particular are struggling to determine what emails are important and what ones are not. By requesting this agenda item, I'd like for the committee to agree to a members-only section on the town council website where non-urgent info-type emails can be placed, e.g. updates on training courses available, so that this reduces the number of emails being circulated. On both Norfolk and Brackland, there's a members-only section of their website, so parish notices if I like to call them, training courses, other meetings that are coming up, rather than sending an email out to everybody, they can be placed on there in a sort of chronological order, so people can proactively go in there and look for updates on training and that sort of thing, rather than effectively filling our inboxes. It has got an awful lot better, I would say, because in the old council, there were several councillors who loved to click reply and say thanks. Reply all and that normally meant everything was about three times as many. So I'm glad that the current council isn't quite like that. But we are still getting quite a lot of emails and it's a bit easier for us that have been here for a while to learn if it's something that's important to read, you can gauge actually a bit easier if you press for time which ones you need to prioritise. But I do get for newer councillors, it's more difficult, you guys can speak for yourself if it's an issue or not, but certainly several people have mentioned it to me. So one, the section on the website, I think would be useful. And then also just a sort of note for staff to be mindful when they're forwarding emails to staff, to councillors from staff, you know, whatever staff are sending, sometimes a bit of context is really useful because, like, what's this, don't know, even I don't know some of them. Thoughts, comments?
Mike, a brief comment to add to what you're saying, I agree entirely. If you are one of the eight of us who is also a district councillor, you frequently get the same email twice because it comes to you as a district councillor and it comes to you as a town councillor. And I think maybe that's not very helpful, maybe we can revise that or at least stick those in the members' department.
Reply to all is my big bugbear, the people that do that, absurd, but people do, fair enough.
Yeah. It's been, I want to read every email that I get, but it's been impossible without context at the start of the email, which is getting stuff mailed to us, which barely seems relevant with, and my real comment would be about the lack of a explaining paragraph at the top, to be honest. So essentially, I'm now treating it as spam. I'm not sure that's a good idea, but I can't see what else to do.
Okay.
Just one thing on our regular meetings, so a meeting such as this, alongside our outlook, we've also got a calendar, so why we don't have a calendar invite and all those documents can still be attached to that calendar invite? And what it does is it uncovers your inbox. So you see that you've got an invite, you go straight into it and on that day, you're not fighting back and forwards, you know, to find a relevant bit because often, like tonight, there might be two or three emails that hold in that information, so it can all be dumped into the calendar invite, if that would be easier.
I agree with that for most of the stuff we perhaps get, but there must always be stuff that is going to be sent out after the calendar invite.
Yeah. But even that can be placed into the calendar invite.
Yeah, oh brilliant.
You could still put it in.
Yeah.
I will say it's got significantly better because I've noted that Karen in particular collates all of the, more than the vast majority of the documents for a meeting are now on one email and I think that's really helpful, certainly when you're in a meeting, being able to locate that. But tomorrow's meeting, for example, I noticed the finance report came out separate to it, so that's, you know, you then got to go back and find the relevant email and that's all then. So that's, you know, you then got to go back and find the relevant email and that's all then. So if, if we can try and collate things, you know, into one email, the better. I appreciate deadlines and the information's not always available when you want it, but yeah, okay. Um, but we've heard that the website is being developed anyway. So if we're content that we would like from the zoning section, um, that can be incorporated into what.
That should be a tool with full detail. That's a, that's an easy thing.
Last word protected. Um, and I think that would also address the points about, um, policies. Because, uh, you could have, you know, some of our policies are public facing, but some of them are more internal, aren't they? So, uh, have, you know, upstate policies in the members only section.
Good, good.
Yes, sure.
Um, in terms of just reading updated, the council has, uh, purchased decisions. And can we also maybe just have a look at how we use decisions? Because what would happen if we, you know, use decisions to distribute information? Before a meeting, you would actually be able to go on and all the data would be there rather than receiving an email. Uh, so that might be something else that we could maybe put in the agenda to discuss and break up a couple of board. But I think one of the key things is it's got to be technology, you know, it's quite difficult to use decisions if, if, if technology's been used yet. At the moment, you know, we haven't, we haven't been able to distribute all the, all the tablets for those councils that are not in Breckland and Norfolk. It would just be a matter of maybe just having a little bit of a intake around that as well, so that we could actually optimize how we'd use that. Because otherwise Paul Karen ends up using two systems, the decision system and a, and an email system. And then it, it doesn't help you as councillors to receive, to receive both. So if we could maybe, if I could, you know, make a suggestion when we have a pre-meeting. We can talk about how we, how we actually do that and bring it back to the finance committee, strike this in our committee to deal with it.
Yeah.
What's that decision?
It's a program of Microsoft, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's, it's the worst of all worlds at the moment because you're emailing the documents, but they're also uploaded to decisions and you get an email saying it's on decisions. But none of us, including myself, I've never had training on decisions. So the council started using it without telling anybody how to use it. And I don't go, well, you might know how to go on decisions. I certainly don't. So, uh.
It's like it's integrated with Teams.
It is integrated. We started using it during Covid when all the meetings. Okay. But if you, I'm very happy, Alan, for you to go away and, um, work up some possible solutions, but, uh. I have had several members say to me they're finding it quite difficult.
Again, sorry, sorry, yeah. Um, again, this seems something that we should probably do through the website, I think.
Sorry, I think what happens, the website is also public facing, so it's quite, the difficulty of what is public facing, what is internal.
Yeah.
You know, if you put it into decisions, that influences the councillors, whereas not everything you might want to be public facing because it could be below the line.
I know, I, I, I was thinking of it being within this captured area for all councillors.
Brilliant.
Yeah. Breckland uses a bit of software called mod.gov. Um, but these days, there's so little below the line on council agendas. When I'm at a meeting, I just use my iPad and go on the council website and find the agenda in the minutes. It's much easier than, you know, people will find a way, whatever works. Okay, thank you very much for that. That's useful. And, um, if anyone's got any other comments or suggestions on emails, do feed them into, uh, Alan. Because, you know, we've got to find a system that works and, you know, is efficient, basically. Uh, that leads us on nicely to eighty eight twenty three councillor training briefing and induction requests. Um, I wanted to try and, um, confirm where we're at with training for councillors. And the induction process, um, and also to have a bit of a, um, list from councillors of what other training, briefing or inductions. They feel they would need to help them do their job. Again, bearing in mind that there's a number of us, um, that are new. Um, and we've been here for a couple of months now, so, you know, you're feet under the table to an extent. Um. I know there's been various emails about training, Alan, but where are we at in terms of, uh, actually delivering some of that?
I think the difficulty from the office's side and coordinated with us is that we have daytime and evening time. And there's a number of councillors that, that, that burst during the daytime and it's harder to best accommodate that. So, uh, before you all emailed, before I received your email, uh, um, and time clock, you know, we had, had been sponsored from eight councillors as to what, you know. Timing of induction training. Uh, I think that that improved today. Uh, uh, we've got a lot more in. Uh, but I think it's really just a matter of once we have that, because I think once you have the basic induction program, it's easier then to work out what you would like more training on. Uh, because at the moment, there's a risk that we ask you what you don't know and that's always very difficult to, to, to explain. So if we can get the induction training going, I think that could be the, the first leg of that. And then from there on, we can then start, uh, focusing on other, on other areas. But it's, it's just getting that, whether we have to do the evenings, whether we have, whether we have two sessions, a daytime session and an evening session, I'm not too sure. But, but we just try to get the data, then make it, you know, to make recommendations to councillors around that.
Okay, and this is training that's going to be delivered by an external person? And it will cover planning?
Uh, there's a specific training course for planning, which we, which we got offered to councillors at the very first planning meeting of, of the new council.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of, so that's, there was an option to have that to electronic. We're on the record, so I can't say too much about that, about that, about the feedback we've received. But there, there is an opportunity to also be other planning, uh, training. And I think that could be, we need to line it up what's best for the councillors and actually offer that to the councillors.
Okay. Anything other than planning?
Uh, there's been a lot of, a lot of courses, energy courses, um, um, we've got other developments that are happening. We've got Martin's Law, for example. Which, which everyone is going to have some, you know, involved in town council like ours is going to have some, have to have some awareness of. And then there's basic induction training. If people are training on budgets, finances, you know, that would also be something that we could offer. Because in November, this council is going to be asked to approve its first budget and, um, there's a lot of work to be done before then.
Okay. Chris?
We used to do chair in as well.
There's, there is a meeting. Is it, uh, chair in successful meetings, uh, on the fifth and sixth of July.
But we've got in the planning training, the online planning training, this country.
He's allowed to say that.
Really bad. I mean, it was, the questions come up and you. No matter how hard you do, the questions weren't updated, weren't right, the answers weren't right, it wouldn't, not good.
Breckland did a very good.
Yeah, well done.
Yeah. In the, I need to make some inquiries because in the past, Breckland were very good at opening up their training, um, to parish and town councils. And I don't think they've done that. I haven't seen any parish and town councillors, any of the training. Um, but obviously they're going to have top planning people come and deliver it because they are the planning authority. So if we can piggyback on some of that, I think that'd be really useful. My, my frustration, Alan, is that Breckland have largely concluded their induction process for new councillors and ours hasn't started. And I, I don't know, maybe I'm speaking out of turn for, for new members, please do say, but I don't feel as if we're supporting people in their role sufficiently. And that's just, I think, I think we could be doing better as a town council.
Yeah.
Terry?
I'd echo that.
Well, you're a new member, so that's.
I am, so that's why I spoke. And yes, I would echo that. I, I, it feels like we've fallen into it. Um. I hope I can speak for more than myself. I'll speak to other people who are sort of flinging around a bit, um, what's going on, what we're doing.
Okay.
I'll leave that.
Um, a couple of things I think would be really useful is, um, buildings. So we've circulated the asset register as such. Could we not organize a, a tour of town council owned buildings for councillors? How many of you have been in St Peter's Church, for example? Are you, have you been here forever? Yeah, the one next door that's owned by the town council. Um, British Legion, we own that.
There's a bit of Thomas Paine in there.
Um, yeah, that'd be really useful. A meet and greet with the staff. There was a name popped up on Facebook the other day with an email address, this lady's name, at fetfordtowncouncil.gov.uk. And I thought, who's she? I didn't know who she was. I've never met her. And I don't, you know, I'd like to meet them all and have a chat with them. And who are you?
I'm guessing it was the same one that popped up on mine. Um, she actually. Works partly for the town council, she was there today, and also works for Inspiration Trust as a, as a P A for the headmaster of the academy.
Hmm.
So I was getting emails from her, from the academy. So that, that's what's going on.
Yeah.
Yes, a couple of years ago, we had, uh, been with the staff. We've all been done. Sat so the council's went and then outside and we'd go and reach back to the face of the board. Having a card even, that was.
Yeah. Again, sorry to benchmark against Breckland, but they gave us all a little booklet with the photos and the names, the email addresses and the phone numbers of all the key members of staff. Um, just be. Otherwise, Alan, everyone's got to keep coming to you.
Went and sort of had a walk around and studied, going to go and meet people. That brilliant idea. Do need to go and do that. But, you know, as long as you, you serve your day, I'd like.
Hmm, yeah. Yeah. Um, sorry, I'm running on a bit here, but other suggestions, please shout. I'm very pleased tomorrow at Heritage and Events, there's going to be a, uh, briefing session on. As part of the meeting about the master plan. I think that's really useful. Um, not great if you're not a member of Heritage and Events and hadn't planned to go. I mean, it's a fairly significant piece of work and, um. You know, if there's slides or whatever, if that could be circulated to all members, that'd be good because for those of you that work won't be at, oh, no, it's at six o'clock tomorrow. That should be.
If you are free to go, please come.
Yeah, exactly.
If you're not a member tomorrow.
It's, I think, six o'clock, yeah. The evening committees other than planning are at six. Um, and then similarly, um, the heritage loss refunded, um, work that we're doing, you know, partly in partnership with Inspiration Trust. It'd be really good to have a briefing on that. Although we're coming to the end of it, I don't feel engaged or sufficient oversight of what's going on there. Um, so that'd be really useful. Any other suggestions in terms of training, briefings or inductions? No? Everyone happy with that list? Good. Speak now or forever.
Forever.
What, what do you mean, you said?
I'm just going to say one thing about the, the training. There's, there's three different providers that we've been given that are doing various bits of training. And they've got set training for the year. So why that can't be on the website as well? These are the, this is the training that's provided.
Yeah.
These are the dates, so that the minute anybody lands in, in the council, they can see automatically. And it doesn't take another email and would you like to, you know, you can, you can get in amongst it straight away more or less.
Yeah.
Because they, they've worked out their training to the bus.
Yeah.
Even if we don't, uh, and I think it's a great idea if we could, uh, jump onto anything that Breckland do.
They used to be very good at widening, you know, because at the end of the day, if they're paid a tutor to come and talk to fifteen councillors and only ten Breckland councillors want to do it. They might as well fill it up with, uh, but I'm not sure what's happened to stop that. So it's, you know, we need to inquire. Uh, okay, I think we've chewed that one over. So, um. Various bits coming up from that, so we'll, uh, monitor that over time. But certainly there's a couple of easy ones there around buildings and staff. Uh, right, uh, moving on to eighty nine twenty three correspondence to note and consider any other correspondence.
There's nothing other than what's come through the agenda. Um, the order to send the A G R, part of the A G R, um, and there's nothing. Uh, they ticked all the boxes, yes, which is but, which is good hope as a council, uh, something that I hope for.
Okay, keep. Uh, ninety twenty three committee officers update to update on any information since the agenda was released. None. Ninety one twenty three committee engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. No. So we're having this, that's anything exciting tonight, so we can't do any media release on that. Uh, brilliant. Thank you very much. Meeting closed.
Cute.
Yeah, wow, that was.